First of all, I want to thank TJ for coming over today and the impetus or the, I'm sorry. Madam clerk, would you read the role please for the council work sessions?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind. Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The impetus for this is, three or four weeks ago anyway, our property revaluations came out.
Yes.
City of Waterloo had a significant devaluations in our reevaluations. And there's a lot of questions about that, TJ, and what I thought would be very helpful to the council is to have some explanation as to how the assessor's office arrives at our property valuation. And appreciate you coming over today.
No problem.
So, the floor is yours and I'm sure we'll have questions when you're done.
Yeah, sure.
So we've got just not quite an hour to get this.
Okay. That should be plenty of time here. What I'm gonna do, oh, my name's TJ Konixfeld, by the way. I was deputy assessor and we've had a little bit of turnover here. This, our assessor resigned this past week. So, I'm kinda filling in, doing the best I can here, so bear with me. I've got a few examples I'll have Noel help me with when I, when I get ready for them here. But what I'm gonna briefly do is just go, well, kind of in-depth, I guess, best I can is go into this, kinda show how the assessment field really works for us as a mass appraisal standpoint. You have any questions, feel free to ask. I'm gonna go through the whole thing and then we'll go from there. If you have any questions, I should be able to help you out. So, basically, I'm gonna have a little sheet I'm gonna read a little bit from and I'll expand on it. So, we, the first thing we do is we work with mass appraisal. So, it's, we work with medians, which means the middle. We assess or appraise on a massive, using massive, the mass appraisal method, meaning values are based on area rather than the way an appraiser would value a property. They typically use three to five comparables, sometimes seven, to appraise a property. So, what that basically means is we have general areas. And I'll get into that more. We actually see examples of that. But these general areas, we'll look at the sales and we'll find a median within this area and adjust the map area down. You'll see example sleds, just an overview. The Iowa Department of Revenue has a manual for us. And I don't need to put this on the screen here, but what this is, is this is online. It's what we use to value property. It includes all the square foot prices. Everything that we actually value from comes from here. We actually have a computer program. This is the paper copy of it, but the computer program, obviously, we enter the square foot of a house. Let's say you have a thousand square foot house, it's brand new. It'll give you a base cost price. So, it's based on if this was to be built today, this is what the value would be, given everything's 100% like that. And then we adjust the value from there based on the sale. So, but it's got a lot of information, commercial, residential, even has agricultural buildings in it. This is online too. If you go to Iowa Department of Revenue's website, they actually have copies of this. So, if you'd like to see what's the square foot price of a wood deck on a house, you know, it'll give you the base cost for that. So, this is, this is basically the Bible we use. Gives you everything you need for a price. Okay. Then what we, I wanted to point this out too, because what we do, we have four, sometimes five field workers. I was one field worker, which is a person that typically goes out, measures, lists property. I want to point out, the permit system, very important to us. We only have four. There's like seventy-four, seventy-five thousand property, I believe, in Black Hawk County. Obviously, we're not gonna go through every single house and maintain properties. So, we rely on the permit system heavily. Craig, obviously, works with us on that. He does pretty good with that. So, I just wanted to point that out, yeah, with the Building Inspection Department. They're really good to work with. Very important, the permits. If people don't take permits out, so we lose our equity. If someone has base and finish, we're not assessing for it. No way of us knowing short of going in, they're not gonna tell us, obviously. So, permit system's great. So, we receive sale information from the declaration of values, data recorded in the recorder's office. We are required to be between ninety-five percent and a hundred-five percent ratio between the assessed value and the sale price. And all that means is, if you've got a house, its assessed value is ninety-five thousand. Sale price is a hundred thousand. Well, we're gonna be at a ninety-five percent ratio on that. So, it's just simply dividing assessed value by the sale price. We research the sales the best we can to see if they're normal arms-length sales. We're not using sheriff sales. And actually, I do have some, Noel, if you could put this up here real quick. This is just a, it's something, this is on the Department of Revenue's website also. But this here is called, "Sales Conditions." And what this is, is it gives, if family sales, they're not considered good sales. Sheriff sales, not good sales. Basically lists all the sales conditions that the Department of Revenue feels could put that sale in question. We don't wanna use bad sales to set assessments. You wanna use normal arms-length transactions between a willing buyer and a willing seller. And it just has thirty, yeah, as you can see there, it's got a few, it just goes right down the list. There's a zero, which is your first one, and then the rest of these are all gonna be considered bad sales. Like I said, family sale, sheriff's sales, there's, oh, there's a bunch of them, about thirty, some of them.
What about like short sales?
Short sales, we don't use short sales. There is something on there for short sales if it's in lieu of foreclosure, something like that. We, if it's reported to us. Now, you know, we, we do call all of our sales. If a sale comes through and, so like, so this one here comes in ninety-five thousand and we're at a hundred thousand, let's say, so we're a little high on it. We'll have, we'll call on the sale and we'll just ask them, "How is our listing look? Is it, you know, is there any conditions with the sales?" Declaration of values, they're supposed to display or disclose everything. Well, you know, you rarely see it. Sometimes a little checkbox on there that says this was family sale. That helps out a lot, but we try to call just to confirm what we have, make sure it's all accurate. So, short sales, there's, yeah, and that's actually in the Department of Revenue's website as well. It just goes in, any sale they consider questionable. So, that's basically what that was. So, the state can issue equalization orders if we do not have a median ratio between ninety-five and a hundred, a hundred-five percent overall in residential and commercial. Equalization is a process of raising or lowering an entire class of property to get to a hundred percent ratio. This can happen in the odd years, which would be two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen. So, when I say odd years, that's what it means. It's not weird. It's just an odd numbered year. What they do is, if, say our assessed values, our median ratio in a class is ninety-three percent. The state can go in and raise the entire class of property, well, theoretically, seven percent to get to a hundred percent. It's the most unfair way to assess a property because you're not, you're raising everything in the entire class, not the properties that need to be raised or lowered. So, what we're trying to do is adjust these map areas. So, you have this, you have one area in Waterloo that's, you know, we're actually under the sale. Then you can have another area of Waterloo that is over the sale. You hate to raise them all up to get to it because of the middle ratio. I don't know if I'm losing anybody there, but that's, it's the most unfair way to assess something. It's, you're just taking a blanket, equalization order across the board, and you're raising everybody, whether you need it or not, is basically what it is. And depending on area, nothing, it's just the entire class. And so, in the odd years, what we're doing is we're, we adjust our map area ratios based on the sales that took place in the previous two years. So, for example, two thousand thirteen assessment year, we used January first, two thousand eleven, through December thirty-first, two thousand twelve sales. The Department of Revenue is now looking at using just one year's sales for larger counties. We have a lot more sales here, so we can, we started to look at using one year now possibly.
So TJ, the assessment that we just got, the evaluation that we got, is a two thousand thirteen evaluation, is that correct?
The assessment you just have is a two thousand thirteen, actually, we're getting ready to mail out our two thousand fourteen's now. So, yeah, the one you have now.
The one that devalued our property.
Yes, yes, that was two thousand thirteen. That would've been an odd year. Let's call it a revaluation year. It's the years we can go in, we reevaluate property. Even numbered years, we just maintain the property. So, if a permit's issued for a deck and a new garage, we'd go out, we'd raise that value or, depending on what they do, lower the value. And it just depends on what's being done. We'll raise and lower based on physical changes. Odd years, we will make changes based on what was, what was actually happening for the sales. On top of the changes they already have, so if you go in and, you know, add a new garage, you can also see actually something come down because the whole map area may be dropped because of the sales in that area. So, it's, you're actually physical changes, but then an area can actually get lowered down, which could offset anything new they did. But then there's the cures and all that, which they still can apply for that as well. Yeah, and like I said, they're looking at doing one year of sales. I think the commercial for two thousand thirteen, they did do one year of sales. They had a number, I couldn't, don't remember the number offhand, but if you had a certain number of sales in one year, they use that because that's a more accurate number. Instead of using two years of sales, they just, well, if you have that many sales, you should have enough market to determine what's actually, determines what's good market for one year instead of two, I guess. So, basically, that was kinda what I get out there right now. So, you kinda have just an idea of what's going on. So, what I have here are several maps that, and Noel, this is where you, yeah, put that one up there, please. We call these PDFs, parcel data files. And basically Waterloo has, it's called, we'll call it PDF three, PDF four, PDF five, PDF six, and PDF seven. I don't know how clear you can make that, but what you have there is what we call PDF three. And that is West Waterloo. What this is, is it's, it's, when we had a re, we had a revaluation. Yeah, I can't quite make out the streets there, but.
We can't either.
I was gonna say, yeah, maybe we can just get in a boundary there.
Can just tell us the boundary. We can riverside the town.
Maybe I can kinda help you. Here's University Avenue.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. What's the one kinda diagonal at the bottom there, kinda just right along the line?
Here's Sergeant Road.
Sergeant Road, okay, so that'd be sixty-three, okay. Yeah, so, what this is, is this is just a, they split Waterloo up into several different parcel data files, PDFs. And what they're doing, and this was back in, we went computerized back in early nineties, I wasn't there, but what they did was they broke out Waterloo into several different, like north, south, east, west areas. And what this is, is this has all the houses in that area. And then they're broken down into certain map areas, which is kinda based on neighborhoods and things like that. And I have a map that'll kinda show that too. But we have several of these. So, I know you guys are probably curious on what, what areas are what. Because I know there's, I actually have a spreadsheet here that shows the values lost and the percentages in each particular area. We'll get into that here too. So, that was that, but I do have, and I can leave this with you guys as well, but that was what we call PDF three. We have a PDF four area, which is the same type of thing. And actually, you could probably take seven. So, he's got his, our different areas. This should be PDF four, I believe, which, okay. This is going to be central Waterloo. So, let's, if you can find some boundaries there for you. Okay. And like I said, what these are, is this is, this is another area now that we can break down and analyze even closer. So, that'd be the central Waterloo one. The next one here, if they're in order, should be South Waterloo, which is gonna be everything south of that, short of Hudson.
Here's Sergeant Road. Here's Law. Kingsborough. St. Paul. Twenty-one Haven. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna show us the north and south.
Here's Shawls. San Martin.
The holes you see in there could be commercial and stuff like that too, but they're, or agricultural, but.
You'll explain the differences in colors, or is it just a different shade of yellow?
The, yeah.
Just our equipment?
The yellow should be the same color, yeah. It should be the same color, so. Yeah, that should all, that's, that's showing the, the South Waterloo basically border. That's that one. There should be a number six, PDF six, which is gonna be north. This one's fairly small, but it's.
Here's the airport. Big Rock Road. Airway, Highway. Broadway.
Okay.
Long Road. No, where's sixty-three at? Sixty-three.
That might be the divider, right there in the middle.
Right here.
Yep.
Okay.
That actually splits up, so everything on the east of that's gonna be what we call PDF seven, which is gonna be East Waterloo. That'll be the next map here.
There's a different color. Quentin, there is a different color now.
That's our technology.
Here's sixty-three again. Coming down from there, here's MLK.
And that's gonna be east there, East Waterloo PDF area.
Broadway view. downtown Waterloo.
Okay. So, now you can, oh, I'm sorry. Now, you can kinda get an idea on what we're calling PDF areas. They're, they're, they're trying to split up so we can, there's so many parcels, we're trying to split up within this area. Now, we can go through and dissect these PDFs into certain map areas. So, now what we're doing is we're gonna go in, and this'll be the next one here, Noel, if you could. I'm going from memory here. So, what this next map you're gonna see here is, is Central Waterloo three. So, this is gonna be, what we do is we have, I'm not even sure how many map areas we have. I'd guess a little over a hundred possibly. What these are though, is within that Central Waterloo, we have, let's just say, ten map areas. This would be one of the map areas here. This is number three. And I just picked this one. It's, it's got some good color. So, what I'm trying to show on this is, is the blue are sales that were, correct me if I'm wrong. I think on top, a hundred percent to a hundred and, two-hundred-and-eighty maybe, ratio. So, that means we're high on all those blue sales from two thousand eleven and twelve. If you, then the greens are the ones that were under a hundred percent, down to, could be.
Sixty.
Sixty, okay. So, we had an array of sales. And that's what we're gonna have when you're doing mass appraisal. You're never gonna, no one's ever just gonna go out and say, "Well, that's the assessed value, let's pay that much." You know, they're still gonna try to do what they can do. So, on a mass appraisal standpoint, we're looking to get that median. So, we have, and that's actually my next one here is gonna be, so I can actually show you that too. This'll make a lot, I hope it comes up. This is, but this is a visual showing you. Blue is, we're, we're high on the sales. Green is, we're low on the sales. And this is just a pocket within that whole PDF three area, which is the Central Waterloo. Okay, well. On the left side of this is, are all, I should've probably printed these out, but on the left side, this is our parcel numbers. Then, there's gonna be, Noel, correct me if I'm wrong, the original, original assessed value.
It was parcel.
Okay.
Sales amount.
Okay.
Assessed value, fire, reval.
Okay.
Fire ratio. After the reval, after the.
Okay. So, the, there's, and there's two columns here. There's just yellow and then the other one is the after. So, what we're doing is we, so we took all the sales that are on that map right now, and we'll go in and we'll find the median. The median is simply just the middle, the middle ratio. I believe we started out at a hundred-and-eight ratio on this map area. So, we know that if it's split, it's split on the middle, you're approximately half-high and half-low. On this one, I don't know what the actual, where it was in the one-oh-eight, where it would actually fit in. But you know you're gonna be high on some sales and some low on sales. What our revaluation does is it goes in and we'll, we'll adjust that certain map area down to get to that median sale ratio. And on this one here was a good example because we had fifty-plus sales. So, it's not a small, if you have a map area that has, you know, six sales, I have a hard time adjusting anything there because you just don't have the data to say, well, you know, based on these six sales out of a hundred homes, it's pretty tough to raise or lower based on six sales. Smaller counties can do that stuff. We usually don't have that kinda problem though in our county. We've got plenty of sales to look at usually. So, you really can't make that out, but the median on there was a hundred-and-eight. And that's simply just dividing the assessed value by the sale price. So, what we did then is we go in and we can actually lower our map areas, which is that previous map you just saw, showing that area. We went and lowered those values down, and I think this one here took ten percent or right around there. So, it lowered the values of all those properties in that map area, a ten percent drop. And then we came in at, I believe ninety-nine percent is what that one came in at. So, it came in at ninety-nine percent. And that's where we wanna be at across the board to avoid an equalization order with the state. Now, this doesn't mean, you know, and it looks, you know, values are coming down and, and it does, you know, what we're looking at is from eleven to twelve, the values did come down from ten, from nine and ten. And this is an overall, I believe, was four-point-four percent. I brought that article from the Courier. I actually have the, the numbers here too, that I believe Michelle has these two that shows the certain areas and the percentage, percentages that they drop. The central, the West Waterloo, the North Waterloo and East Waterloo took the biggest hits. There was a seven-and-a-half percent drop in Central Waterloo, and this is just an average. There was a six-point-three percent drop in North Waterloo. And in East Waterloo, there was a seven percent drop. That is just based on two years of sales from our previous assessed values to get down to that middle ratio. If we don't do this, then what's gonna happen is you get, you have Waterloo, you have Cedar Falls, you have Dunkerton, Elk Run. If you have a bunch of low sales, everybody gets raised. If you have a bunch of high or the other way around, you, other, so you, we just try to avoid an equalization order because that's the most unfair value. So, now you can, we look at this certain map area, we can lower this one down, knowing out of, out of, I don't know how many homes were in here, but we had fifty sales. I know we're high on most, low on some, but we lowered all those down to get to that median ratio. Where an appraiser's gonna come in, is they're gonna go in and they're gonna say, well, you know, we're gonna find three separate sales or four separate sales that look mo, most like this one, and they come at us. So, that's where pad becomes a problem because if we know we're high on most of our sales, pad, if they've got a sale sitting there, it's tough to beat them. That's, that's an open market if it's a good sale. So, we, we try to fight some of them. We win some, we lose some, but.
Let me ask, can I ask a question?
Sure, yes.
So, so just two quick questions right now.
Okay.
So, last year, the, the property values stayed the same. They didn't go down. Is that, can you explain that portion again?
Yes, that was, that was for fourteen, well, this is, for thirteen, this was, the values all came down for January first. And not all of them. There was some areas, well, actually, East Waterloo commercial did go up a little bit. I don't know what the numbers were, but we did, we were low on some of those, so those went up. For two thousand three, January first, seven thirteen, that's when all these numbers took place. For two thousand fourteen, we're actually working those right now. And we're not gonna do any revaluation for two thousand fourteen because it's an even-numbered year. I don't know if I'm answering your question correctly.
Even if we bounce back up, we're not gonna get to take advantage.
Yeah. We, we don't do that on even-numbered year. In Iowa, we're only allowed to revalue on odd-numbered years. That, basically, you have, you have even years and odd years. In Iowa, you assess every two years. So, what I mean by assess is we, we maintain, I just look at, we maintain properties on the even-numbered years and we, we revalue on odd-numbered years. So, two thousand fourteen's an even-numbered year. Really, the only changes we're gonna see are, if we find something that's incorrect on a house, we're looking at, we research our sales, we look at them. If, you know, it doesn't, never fails, you know, the person doesn't take a permit out for it and the whole house is recited, well, we'll correct that. Permits, through the permit system, that kinda thing, we'll adjust those. We won't go in and do a revaluation like this until two thousand fifteen now.
So, so, so there's, there's no windshield look at the property before those properties are actually knocked down a little bit because I think that was one of the things that concerned me in being a property owner myself. I took, I don't even know how many thousands of dollars hit on my own house. And then when I called, I think someone from the county said, "Well, we'll come out and look." Well, I'm like, "Well, didn't you look to be able to assess that it went down? So, you need to come in and look to assess it to see if it didn't go down." So, I was kinda challenged by that.
Sure.
And then, I'm representing the area that took one of the largest brunts to their property value. I was confused at how that was actually taking place because seven percent plus an additional six percent to just folks across the highway.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, your, your value of your property has so much to do with equity and about the different things that you can do as just a consumer. So, I was challenged at how this equalization came out from the state or from the county. Last question, real quickly, but what criteria was used to develop those boundaries? Was that given to us by the state, or was that the county that decided?
It was back in, well, this is all before I was here, but back in, pre nineteen ninety-one, I believe, it was all, they used to use some old cards, the old appraisers and everything. They'd probably remember that. They had, we had old property records, everything was hand-written and everything. Then, back in, and right around ninety-one, I think, is when they put, when they put everything on the computer system. What they did was, they had an appraisal company come in. I believe it would've been Vanguard back then. And what they did was, they went in and split out areas in Waterloo. It's such a vast area. You don't wanna have everything lumped together. So, they, they split out areas. Now, how that was actually used, I believe it was major arterial roads, I believe, rivers, things like that, is what I was always told. And if I did look at some of those, I think they, they did try to split, you don't see them like on a side street too much. It'd be the, the major roads. I don't have any often example right now, but rivers, things like that, they tried to split up or use as boundaries.
Saw University at the.
Yeah, University, yeah, Cedar River, anything north of that, anything south of that, that kinda thing.
So, your, your property value could've gone up or could've decreased based upon what location your house was grouped with?
True, yes. Yeah, and it all just depends, we've had, we actually, sixty, on sixty-three, heading north there, well, you've got what we call PDF six and PDF seven. One side is six, one side is seven. And if this, you know, and we're looking at the sales in PDF six, even though this area up top, there might not be any sales at all, but they're being pulled in with everything else. They can actually have a, well, this side of the road went down five percent. This side of the road might've went down ten percent, just based on how the whole area sold. It's, and it's a mass appraisal standpoint, so it's, it's not perfect, but they, they have to draw a line somewhere on these. Sixty-three, I know, was a boundary on one. So, let me see here. That goes, so that spreadsheet there, I'd leave that with you too. That kinda shows how, you know, it was before and then after. Some of the numbers, it's gonna be a pretty good example. There could be differences because nothing was, I don't know if Tammy had anything saved from when she did all this earlier, but the numbers that I have there are gonna be fairly accurate. There could be some that might be a little different because we've been outside actually updating our property records now. But it's gonna be a very good example of that there. That's what I had to present on how the values arrived and all these examples help out a little bit. I do have some other things, but if there's any other questions regarding this, I'd gladly take them.
TJ, I'll start with one.
Yes.
And we'll see where we go with this. Can you, can you boil this process down, maybe to simplify it a little bit? And maybe it's not true, but.
Okay.
The assessed value is arrived at, basically at some kind of a formula that you used in measuring the assessed value versus the sale value.
Yeah, just assessed value divided by sale price. That is just the nuts and bolts of it.
So, and, and those are, those are further affected by which PDF you're in?
Yeah, well, the, the ratios actually stay, but yeah, they do get affected if we decide, if we're high in a map area, like that one we showed here, we're at a hundred-and-eight as the median. like that one we showed here, we're at a hundred and eight as the median, then, then those, we can lower that down in an odd year.
So my, my question, I guess, fundamentally, I maybe have a little bit better understanding of how we got to a hundred and four thousand, a hundred and four million dollars in devaluation. The bigger question is why? Why did that happen? I mean, when all of the indicators, everything is positive. We are having more sales, we're having more, more development, more improvements, more of all kinds of really good things. Why, why does that happen?
Well, we've had a lot of, if you, we, we have a lot, when we're doing our board review process, that's the process of, you know, when we send out our assessment rolls, there's a board review, which is complete separateness from our office. They can go in, they can raise lower values based on what they feel. There's two realtors and an appraiser. There's a farmer, farmer, cultural stuff and a con, former contractor. And during this process, we have a lot of homeowners and they come in, you know, and they say, well, my value's too high, my value's too high, my value's too high. And it, it's, it never fails that, you know, well geez, how come we're the only ones in the, you know, in the world that never see our property values decline when the rest of the economy is and all that kinda stuff. And, you know, and I tell them, hey, you know, we're, we're not, we're, we're our own separate area. We look at our own separate sales. We're not looking at California, we don't look at anything else. We just, we look at what we have and this is what it is. As far as the sales, your, your, your south Waterloo was two point eight percent. So, you know, when you start adding up all these, you will get to that hundred and four, whatever it was, million. How it got is the sales between, and when the sales from two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten would have been used for two thousand and eleven. I'm only, I'm, I'm only gonna go out there and say that those sales there, we know our peak was right around two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, right or no, two thousand and five was a good year where you could buy a house for a hundred thousand dollars, live in it for two years and sell it and sell for a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty, and that was happening constantly. We're, we're now at the point where we're not, we're no longer seeing these huge boosts where, you know, you can live in a house and make money off. And now, you know, we're noticing if, if you sell for what you bought it for, you're, you're happy, you know, I, I don't know what's causing that, to be honest with you. But it, it is there and, and we can definitely, we can definitely see. The number of sales are still there. We're still seeing lots of sales. I mean, it's, people are still moving. They're just not paying as much as they were, I guess, back in the booming times. They've lowered the interest rate on houses. I mean, I, I know I refinanced, God, was it last year, the year before, but two and a half percent for a fifteen year loan. They're trying to bring it back. I don't, I don't think it really hit us like it hit the, the, the larger cities, but we are seeing, you know, it, and I don't, I hate to say declining, but it's, it's no longer raising up as much as it was and we're starting to see areas start to come down a little bit. You know, back a few years ago, if you actually lost money on a house, it was crazy. Now, it's, you know, not the norm, but it's happening. It's, it's definitely happening.
I have one more question.
Sure, sure.
Is that a trend across the state?
Um, yeah, we did.
Surely it's not, not, not.
It's not located here. No, no. I mean, it, it's throughout, we, we've talked to quite a few assessors. There, um, there, there's, the, the larger cities. I don't have any numbers offhand. I know Cedar Rapids, they, they saw some. I don't, I don't have any of that information handy, but it wasn't just Blackhawk County by any means. No, it, it's, I mean, it, you know, it seems, you know, it, it seems like it, it takes a while to affect us. We have the farm economy, which is still great here, you know, so farmers are still buying plenty. I mean, acreages are still selling farm ground is record highs. So they're still buying and selling. The residential houses though is, is something that was affected this past few cup, few years and it's now starting to catch it. That's the problem with what we're doing is we're actually, you're looking at two years. So right now for two thousand, let's say for two thousand, for fourteen, we're not gonna do anything, but two thousand and fifteen, we're actually gonna look at the two thousand and thirteen and fourteen sales. So now, you, what you were in right now and last year is what's gonna be affected for two thousand and fifteen. Right now, I'm, I don't have any numbers as of today, but I know when, when we looked, it was a few months ago, we were right at that ninety-nine, ninety-eight percent, so I don't see a big change for fifteen as of now, but we still have a full year of two thousand and fourteen sales. And like I said before, the department revenue may just make us use one year of sales. And if that's the case, then the sales that happened last year didn't even matter. Other than us just looking at them.
Counsel, do you have questions?
The improvements due to the, the, the weather this past year, there were lots of improvements, roofs and different things being done. Are those things factored into what would help improve a person's property value?
To an extent, to be honest with you, what we do in, and this is across the state, you're allowed roofs, you're allowed kitchens, that kinda thing in a house. That's considered what, this manual's considered base. You're allowed one bathroom in your house. Bedrooms don't do anything for assessed value. But yeah, we did, this past year actually, we had a ton of roofing permits, hail damage and stuff. None of that's gonna do anything for value for us because roofs are just maintaining your roof. We, we don't add values for roofs. Now, an appraiser, you know, they, they go out and you have a brand new roof, they'll go out and maybe adjust that value. Hey, you got a new roof, that actually adds a little more money to it, but from, from a master appraisal standpoint, we, we're not, we don't do roofs. Windows, you know, if you just put windows in your house, replace your windows, that won't add, that won't add value. Unless, overall, if you've got a house that had some wood lap siding or some old asbestos siding, masonite, you know, it's any kinda siding like that, aluminum, and you re-side with vinyl, now you have the curb appeal, you'll see an increase.
So it has less to do with what you do to your home?
Unless you're doing additions, garages, decks, patios. If, if you go in and gut the house, you know, you have old drywall and you've got some holes in there, we've got it in a condition that's considered below normal or poor for the year built. And you go in and, and you re-drywall the interior, don't really change the listing much, keep your three bedrooms and your bathroom there. You can see an increase there due to the condition of the house. But if you're just maintaining your property, and that's where it gets kinda tricky too, because people think just putting siding on your house is maintaining, but you're, you're improving your property sales standpoint with, with new siding and stuff, so you get the curb appeal, but.
Well, I, I think, I think maybe some of the challenges that people look at owning their homes sometimes as an individual, individual process, you know?
Sure.
You have that home at so-and-so Boulevard, you maintain it, you keep it up, you invest in your home, and then for a large part, it has nothing to do with that. It has something to do with other factors outside of your control.
Yes.
You only have control over what's taking place in your home.
Yes.
So that's why it was sort of a challenge, you know, to me first as a homeowner, but then secondly, as representing an area that's taken like a seven percent hit. And if you just go down certain, cer, you know, just certain blocks, you, you know people are working hard to build up their houses, keep their property up. You know that there's been new sales in areas of your ward or that you represent that haven't seen new homes in over eighty years. You've know there's other projects that have helped to really upkeep our, upkeep the property and try to make a difference. But none of that, you know, things are outside of their control. So I, I mean, I'm really challenged by,
Yeah.
challenged by this.
It's a, it's a, it's a tough system. You know, we, you always, we always hear it. If, you know, you get the guy that's, he's maintaining his property, you know, well, his tax bill's up here. And now you get the people that, well, I'm just gonna let my property go, I'm not paying taxes. They let go, all of a sudden their value just keeps lowering, lowering, lowering. Well, seeing now the people that come in and maintain their properties, they feel they're being penalized because they're just maintaining it. Well, why is my tax bill so much higher? Because I'm just trying to keep my house nice. Well, it kinda goes the other way too, where, you know, you, you, you know you're not gonna sell, you're not gonna move, but you're gonna maintain your house. The ones around you selling, depending on what they sell them for, and what our assessed value is kinda determines the market there. If you wanna put your house up for sale, the first thing a realtor's gonna do is they're gonna look in your block and they're gonna find, oh, here's a house similar to yours that sold for this, you know, we might be able to shoot for this. Or, or something, you know, they'll find something comparable. If you never sell and you keep maintaining, that every, all the outside influences are gonna affect. You know, if you put an addition on your house, you can jack your value up because we, we will do that, you know, that's enough value. But now, if you're just doing small things, that map area might compensate, overcompensate for it.
And so that percentage that, that went across the city based upon that, that is a state percentage or was that?
No, that's based, that's based on, that's county map area percentages. So that's looking at this pocket of sales here. It's like that, that map I had that showed the blue squares versus the green squares. That's looking at that pocket there and saying, well, out of this pocket here, we have fifty good sales and we are high on thirty-five of them. Now, the fifteen, you know, we know we're gonna be off a little bit there because, but on a mass appraisal standpoint, that whole map area went down because of all the sales in there that we were high on, on a median standpoint.
Mr. Wolf, Morris?
How does crime, the crime rate in these areas affect?
We get a couple, we get a few people every now and then that go to the board review. And I can speak from the board review process because that's where you hear these people mostly coming in. And they, they get basically, if you get an oral hearing, which is, you know, they come in, they get ten, fifteen minutes to tell their side of the board review. I sit in those meetings because I'm allowed to defend our values if I feel the value's correct. They still do what they wanna do. So I, I sit there and I listen along with the other board members. And what they, and, and you'll hear, you know, why I've, I've had stuff stolen out of my house three or four times, my house isn't worth anything. I've heard, you know, there's a, there was a shooting across the road in my house, you know, why, why should my ta- taxes be this high, you know, and I can't imagine, you know, we don't see any direct, you know, here's a shooting here. We, and that's something we could almost look into if, with the pictometry, we, with the software we have, if they can log in shootings and see if there's a pockets of, you know, maybe this is where the sales, we're seeing major declines in this area. You know, I, I don't, I don't have any answers as far as if it directly affects your value because we're looking at general areas.
But in the, when you said like six, six point two percent drop in north, seven point, uh, seven percent in east?
Yes, yes.
Did crime statistics enter into those particular areas in the drop?
No, no, not directly. Now, if they entered through the sales, we don't know that, but not directly. We don't look at as crime as a, well, you know, we're a little high here, this could be, no, we don't, we don't factor that. All we do is look at the, the straight numbers. You know, we look at those ratios.
And how about multi-family converted homes? From single to, I mean.
We do, we do analyze the, the conversions and, and that kinda thing too. Separately, well, they're still residential, the two family, uh, three family or more are commercial currently. We do look at those to see what those self ordinarily and we can adjust those based on just adding some obsolescence or something, but we don't factor in, well, here's a pocket of those within this area, does that bring the area down? We're just looking at numbers of the sales that came through.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Steve, Dave, Carol, anybody? Questions?
TJ, could you talk a little bit about the TIF numbers?
Honestly, I do not know anything about the TIF numbers. I don't work with the TIF numbers. Helen in the auditor's office may believe on that. I don't know anything about TIF. I'm sorry. I don't know anything about the TIF.
Thanks. Anyone else?
One more. If, if you were, you, you have these seven different areas that have been mapped out since pre nineteen ninety-one.
Sure, sure.
And if you were to change those, if you were to amend those, move them around a little bit, that might have a drastic difference in the numbers that you're talking about, wouldn't it? Couldn't it?
It, it could a little bit, but it's still, the, the vast majority of them, we were high on as far as the ratios, you know, between being at that closest a hundred percent as we possibly can get. So it, it could shift a little bit here and there, but when, you know, depending on if you've got a pocket of, we, and we try to, try to group the houses. You know, if you go down, you know, Audubon Heights, you know, there, you've got, you've got an area there, they're all pretty similar houses. They all sell similar. Now, if you get to a section where it's a bunch of older houses next to it, which is out there, we'll break that line there. We don't wanna influence, we don't wanna influence these older houses with these newer ones that are being built. Yellowstone, for example, that's out there, they're, that's really booming right now with this, I don't know how many houses they did this year, but that area there, we're keeping with that little pocket over there. We're not including that with, with other houses on William Drive, those larger ones, because they're not a good comparable as far as sales goes. So shifting them around, we do look and we do odd years, we do shift sometimes, you know, it does change a little bit, but I don't know if it would affect overall ratios that much, to be honest with you. Because the sales are still there, it's just a matter of where you wanna place them.
Can someone make, can someone ask to have their home shifted with another, with another, uh, area?
Oh, I've never been asked that before.
I want my house shifted where the property values don't change as much. That's what I want.
Well.
Right next to David. I just want my, I just want to be grouped in that.
Sure.
That's right. Any other, any other discussion?
Anybody else? Good job, TJ. I, I hope that we have a little better understanding as to, as to how property is valued.
Do I have a couple more minutes?
Absolutely.
Just a couple more things I wanna touch on real quick. I don't get to talk to you guys very often, so. Not that I want to, but here it is. Okay, so. The, I just wanted to update you that I don't have any numbers for the PAB rulings and, and that process, but everyone, you know, if everyone's aware, this PAB is a big deal. It's the Property Assessment Appeal Board. It is, it used to be just a board review process and then if you didn't like what the board review decided, you can go on to district court. And now it's pretty much it. Now they opened up this PAB, which is completely free. It, it's a good service for people in general. Problem is, is the, the, yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna say, it's, 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 it's a good, it's a good thought, but what it opened up is the, it made careers for people that fight taxes. So, you know, if you've got, if you're a tax representative, yeah, you, you, you can go there and it's free, it doesn't cost anything. Well, we know, and for two thousand and eleven, we had just record numbers. It was insane. And you, you try to fight them all, but you're just completely bombarded. So I don't have any numbers up there on that, but I did wanna let you know that we are getting close to finish. I, we still, we still have the aisle out there. I don't know anything about that one yet. Like I said, I'm taking over a little bit, helping out where I can, so I don't know where we left off, but that one's still out there. The rest of the big ones, I believe, are taken care of. So thirteen, we're, we're looking at minimal. It wasn't that bad. Obviously, with the values that came down, now a lot of people protested. Which, I guess that's a positive if you look at it that way. I did wanna point out too, the apartment economists have definitely slowed down. That's where we're losing all of our commercial base for their apartments. They're now shifting to cooperatives though. So they can submit articles of corporation and they get turned into a residential class based on selling shares. Really do you see the shares sell, but it's another loophole if you want. So you will see, you know, and, and that's actually gonna start up the, my next point, which was multi-residential, which is coming in two thousand and fifteen. That is going to be a new class we're looking at. Human habitation is gonna, it's a commercial parcel, but human habitation is going to be what, what determines if it's gonna be in this class or not. So all the downtown buildings here like Screaming Eagle, that's got bar, office, and then the top floor, I believe, are apartments. So the apartments on that will be multi-residential. The bar and the office itself will still maintain the commercial class. The multi-residential is gonna see a rollback that is eventually gonna meet up with residential rollback. Right now, residential rollbacks are about half, fifty-two percent. I was told in, right around in twenty twenty-two, they're gonna be right around sixty-three percent multi-res. And that's where we're supposed to meet up with, with the residential class. So just to give you an idea on what's happening, the residential is gonna be taking a major brunt on this because it's gonna offset the commercial, which, you know, that's what the whole point of the bill was this past year. So and that's all online. I'm not, you know, I'm just reporting what I saw.
So what you just said is the residential rollback is going to continue to go up?
Yes. Right now, we're at fifty-two. Event, you know, twenty twenty-two, which isn't, you know, it seems like a far, we know how time goes. We'll be looking at a pos, I think sixty-three percent on residential. They're not coming out and saying that, but they're saying that the multi-residential class will equal the residential class in twenty twenty-two. With the multi-residential class being at sixty-three percent.
And that stayed driven, that's.
Yes, yes. So if that gives you any idea of what's coming, it's, it's the residential is going to be, instead of paying fifty-two percent as of today, I believe it's fifty-two percent, you're gonna pay on sixty-three percent. That's another eleven percent on your, of your rollback there. So it's gonna be, and that's, that's coming, you know, that's, that's coming. Every year, you're gonna see less and less rollback on this residence or the multi-res. The commercial, I believe right now, we're going to a ninety-five percent, so we're gonna pay five percent less on the rollback. And then years after that is ninety percent. So I think it maintains ninety percent constantly. So it's, it's gonna be kind of a shift, which is the whole idea of the tax reform. Good or bad. Let's see, commercial block, that's all I had.
Just a real quick question to him. Did, you may have said this already, but there's houses that are sold on tax sale. Are those included somewhere in this? They're not included on?
No, we're looking at just normal arms length transactions. John smells, sells to Bill and it's just on. Um, John smells, sells to, to Bill, um, and it's just on the market, sells, that's what we're after. Anything that's got any kind of stipulations, that's where that Nutco list comes in. Anything that's got a stipulation, um, we, we rule those out, which is by the state. Now, some of those are questionable, but the state tells us which ones to use.
Thank you.
If, if we don't use it, they will, and then that's where it all equalsation words come in, so.
So that, that would also include the 657A homes that we sell too, right?
Yes, yes, yep.
So TJ, uh, in 2022, due to the state legislation that passed, the, um, uh, residential property owners' taxes are going to go from, they're, they're going to increase from 52 rollback to 63.
Roughly 63% is what I was last, last.
And so I just hope that everybody understands that was state legislation.
That is state.
And the City of Waterloo is not increasing that.
No, the rollback is issued, uh, to, to the auditor by the state, Iowa Department of Revenue, and there's nothing we can do about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ, good job.
TJ, real quickly, one more.
Okay.
We were just, we were just talking about this, I think, at the agenda meeting about those, uh, large properties. So I heard you say you think all of them but the Isle have been resolved?
From what I understand, uh, yeah, and I'm still just kind of getting caught up, like I said, this past week was crazy, but I'm still getting caught up, but from what I can tell, the Isle, I know the Isle's still out there, and I think that's set for possibly May, I believe, and that's district court. Um, I don't know where we're at on that, to be honest with you, at all. I know there's a couple appraisals sitting there, and of course, we're pretty close to where we want to be, and they're way down here. So we're, you know, we'll figure out where that all comes into play. Um, other than that, I don't know of any larger ones, um, offhand, nothing stuck out. Do we have just a couple hanging out there from 2011? 12 was basically an even numbered year, so they had to prove that, uh, the 11 value was wrong. Seemed to be okay there. 13 is our another one that we're working on now. I didn't see any major ones off the top of my head, um, but they're still coming. We, we don't know half of those yet.
So there had been a number of large ones though, six months or a year ago. So your opinion would be then that they're all resolved one way or another? They are what they are, with the exception of the Isle?
The 2011s, yes, yes. Yep, other than the Isle and maybe a couple other ones, but nothing, nothing like it was.
TJ, can you talk about, um, when a property that does go to tax sale?
Mm-hmm.
How does that impact that particular property's value? I understand you're not counting that property when you're revaluing the others in the map area.
Sure.
But does it affect that particular property?
If it does go on tax sale, what we do, um, we look at all of our sales. So even though we're not, you, we're not analyzing any part of that sale because it's not considered a normal sale, um, we'll still look at it. We'll find a lot of these share sales, tax sales, that kind of thing, you know, they kind of let them go. Um, they're hardly maintained well. So we'll adjust the conditions or the values accordingly, um, whether we feel, you know, just by looking at it. Well, with, last time we were at this house was 2005, now we're, now it's 2014. Well, it's been up for share sale, you know, you, you could assume there's probably some, some holes and, you know, let it go a little bit. So it, it, it gets adjusted through the revaluation process based on the normal sales around it, but we'll physically change the value if we feel it's necessary, I guess if that answers your question.
Okay. Anybody else? TJ, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming over.
Not a problem.
On your notice and did a great job.
Not a problem, thank you.
Don't agree with a lot of what you said, but.
I, I don't, I, I understand, it's a, it's not a fun, uh, fun career, but.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor? Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Gentlemen and welcome, it's, uh, 5:30, so we're going to go ahead and get started on time, and I want to welcome everybody that's here tonight in our audience. Uh, first of all, I'm going to check and see if I'm turned on. I am. Uh, have a good crowd tonight, and all those also that might be watching us on our public access television, welcome to this January 27th regularly scheduled meeting in the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Thank you. If you would all join me, please, and standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Uh, our pledged, pledge tonight is going to be led by Matt O'Brien, our Director of Technology. Matt, please, would you start us?
Could you please run me the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Hart.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amend, those amendments are removing items number 11 and 12 to allow for further review. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of January 21st regular session as proposed.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes?
Mr. Mayor. I did get a question about the deletion of those two items from somebody on the Landlords' Association, said they heard about it, just very, you know, end of the day type thing, and I was just wondering if I could ask, who pulled it and why?
I pulled it, and I explained it to you, I think, Mr. Schmidt, but we have several people that would like to, several council members that would like to include the domestic violence victims, uh, issue along with the landlord ordinance. And, uh, I, I didn't want to bring the landlord ordinance forward and have it either tabled or worse yet, fail because that domestic violence issue wasn't part of the landlord ordinance. So I, I pulled it, and I didn't do it till just about noon today, so it was late notice to get that done, and if anybody's here for that, I apologize. But, uh, the landlord ordinance that, that Mr. Clark, Craig Clark has proposed is incredibly important to us, that we get that passed. I think they've done a lot of work, Craig has done a lot of work, they've had a lot of meetings with the landlord association, and I, I think we're where we need to be with that. Unfortunately, we haven't coincided with that work with the domestic violence issue, and there are council members that wanted that to be looked at, so we are.
Thank you.
And I, I expect that to come back in a couple of weeks, I, I hope.
Thanks.
Okay? Did I say that right?
Yep.
Gentlemen? Okay, very good. Uh, so that's the reason. So again, I apologize if anybody's here for that. Further questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry. You know, ladies and gentlemen, we do a lot of important stuff at the Waterloo Council meeting. We do a lot of things that are, are routine, and we do a lot of really important stuff for the city. Sometimes we just do stuff because it's really fun and it's really the right thing to do. So tonight we get to recognize a fellow that lives in our community that has, has just, uh, added immensely to the quality of our life. So PK, would you come up, please, Coach PK O'Handley with the Waterloo Blackhawks? Good to see you. For those of you that don't go to Blackhawks hockey, shame on you, first of all, but if you don't, you, you may not recognize PK O'Handley, who has coached, uh, the Blackhawks for 13 years?
12.
12 years, I was close, uh, to, uh, a lot of records. We won a Clark Cup, uh, we've done a lot of really good things in Waterloo. About a week ago, uh, coach, coached the Blackhawks to his, to their, and his 530th win, which is a United States Hockey League win record. Uh, Coach PK now owns that record for the Waterloo Blackhawks. And, uh, you know, I, I will tell all of you in, in council to boot, that if you've never been to a Blackhawks game, you need to go. And if you go and you don't have a good time, your heart's not beating or something. Uh, it's one of the greatest programs that we have in the city, and we have a lot to be proud of here with the Bucks baseball and the United Panthers and everything that we've got going here. The Blackhawks are, are a real treat. We're very fortunate to have you, and we're very fortunate to have the Blackhawks. So tonight we're going to recognize PK for his, uh, record-breaking 530th win with a proclamation that says, whereas, the Waterloo Blackhawks have brought fun, excitement, and pride to Waterloo and the Cedar Valley. And whereas, under the tutelage of head coach PK O'Handley, many young hockey players have battered themselves in hockey, bettered themselves. Some of them get battered too, though. Bettered, battered, bettered themselves in hockey, including the NHL and other careers. And whereas, passion and a love for the sport of hockey has proved Coach O'Handley an excellent coach and fan favorite. And whereas, on January 18th, 2014, PK O'Handley coached his team to his 530th victory, becoming the new USHL record holder with 530 wins and counting. There's been a few since then. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim Friday, January 31st, this coming Friday, 2014 in Waterloo, as PK O'Handley Day. And I invite all to the Blackhawks home game this Friday, January 31st, 2014, at 7:00 PM at Young Arena, to experience exciting hockey and the ceremony honoring Waterloo Blackhawks head coach PK O'Handley. PK, I could not be more honored and proud to be able to present you with that. Okay, but I do expect you to say a couple of words, if you will. Whoa, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute. If you don't use the, well, they, they can't hear you out in TV land.
Some of my friends say I don't talk very loud, but, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, members of the council, and, uh, it's a humbling experience, more, a lot of good players and, and good coaches that have worked with, with me and, and staff people, so, uh, Waterloo is my home, and, and I've said that a, a lot, and I, I mean it, it's a great place to live and work, and, uh, thanks to all of our citizens, and whether you like hockey or whether you don't, I, I think what we have going on downtown kind of coincides with everything else that's, uh, going forward downtown Waterloo, and it, it's a special place to be for, for me and my wife and our family, and, uh, certainly the Blackhawks. So thank you all very much, uh, very humbling indeed.
Thanks, PK. Thank you for what you do. PK, I do, I, I wanted to mention that you kind of brought your posse with you here tonight too, I, I see that. You know, I don't know if that's for support or, or whatever, but I always mention after we do these kind of things, and I told Dan earlier, that it's a great lesson in civics if you want to stay and watch the rest of the council meeting, although you don't have to if you don't want to. Thanks, guys.
It's like a hockey match sometimes here.
It is.
But we're on the same team.
All right, very good. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to move that, uh, we, we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B10. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $2,978,716.42, 2,978,716.42.
Second. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, who spoke?
Mr. Schmidt, yes.
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing in as for the Waterloo City Council chambers renovation.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against the remodeling of the city council chambers? The second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form, contract, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second. And that's a roll call vote also, please.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file, instruct the city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to building official maintenance administrator for review.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Very good, the motion carries, and ladies and gentlemen, we have one, two, three, four, five, six bids tonight for this project. Engineer's estimate on the project is $250,000. Madam Clerk, please.
The first bid is from Cardinal Construction, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And it looks like the total bid amount is $230,230,000, with an alternate of $5,730, 5,730.00. The next bid is from Don Gardner Construction. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total bid is for $213,800, 213,800, with an alternate of $6,140, I'm assuming $6,140, but there's a typo on it, so, Craig, you'll have to clarify that, 6,140.00. The next bid is from Faylor Hurley Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. The next bid is from Faylor Hurley Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. Bid bond is for 5%. Total bid is for $189,189,000,000.00, with an alternate of $5,505,500.00. The next bid is from Larson Construction Company of Independence, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total bid is for $232,700,232,700.00, with an alternate of $5,600,570.00. The next bid is from Paul Christensen from Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total bid is for $220,125,220,125.00, with an alternate of $5,200,570.00. And the final bid is from Peters Construction Corp. of Waterloo, Iowa. Bid bond is for 5%. And the total bid is for $204,888,204,888.00, with an alternate of $5,555,570.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the request by Bosnian Islamic Association of Waterloo, Iowa for a site plan amendment to the R4RP Plan Multiple Family Residence District to allow for the development of a new Ma Cemetery and Sports and Recreational Complex generally located on 15.26 acres south of Marigold Drive and north of Memory Lane.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do you have any written objections on file to item number three tonight?
I do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this project at this time? And if you would, please just give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Amel Dzadovic, and my address is 1231 Loyce Lane in Waterloo, Iowa.
Okay, Amel?
My name is Sanad Kopic. Live at 1020 Oregon Street, 50702 Waterloo, Iowa.
Okay, welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
I know there are, we had some conversation earlier today, but if you gentlemen would like to just kind of explain to the council maybe what you have in mind for the plan, et cetera. I'm sure there will be questions, but we'll start with you.
Okay. What the Bosnian Islamic Association has in mind is something similar to what a church is. Basically, just a community center for Muslims, Bosnian Muslims, and they'll even welcome other Muslims in the area as well, where they will be able to pray. They'll have a small soccer field. I know you keep calling it soccer sports complex, but it's more of a, just a soccer field, no bleachers, no lights, nothing like that. It's just a place where they can have picnic and play some soccer. On top of that, they would also like to be able to have a cemetery. Cemetery is very important to the, to our community and Muslim people, and unless they can build that cemetery, they will not proceed with this project. That's very, very important to them. They are aware of state restrictions they need to take in place in order to get a license to have a cemetery, and they're ready and willing to do everything it takes to have that in place. They're familiar with the process. There's another Bosnian mosque from Des Moines that also had to go through the same thing. And so they kind of got familiarized with the process, and they're ready to do that. There were some objections before about what the cemetery is going to do to the neighborhood, and they're also ready to put up fences, so that, privacy fences around it, so that way, it's not an eyesore to anyone. Basically, they're ready to do this. They just need your approval so they can begin and do this, so.
Thank you, Amel.
Yep.
Counsel? Let's see if we have questions or comments now of these gentlemen, or just generally speaking. Mayor? Mr. Welker?
Gentlemen, I applaud your project. I'm supportive of it. Board of Adjustment gave you an allowance of five acres versus a 30. But the concern is, is that the, should the cemetery not work out, that the city would get stuck having to maintain it? What was the dollar amount that was reached? And what is the dollar amount generally on a 30-acre cemetery? Do we have a, do we have a dollar amount on that? What, they put up $25,000?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, the state code requires a $25,000 minimum amount on there. I don't know if Mr. Walsh wants to state anymore, but basically that, that was the only amount that was discussed, was the minimum requirement was $25,000.
Even on a 30-acre?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Very good. Counsel, do you have further comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I'd just like to ask a question on, in the cemetery, are there raised headstones? Are they flat?
They are raised. They're about probably two feet in the, from the ground. And? Two, two to three feet. It's not any different than what, what's currently on the memorial off of Highway 63.
Yeah, it's the way how, how we do actually with that. So it will be completely different or out of question if we try to do something else that we do actually or our life the same way. So we try to keep the same way still.
Same height, same everything.
Yeah.
Okay, further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
I just had two quick questions. Number one, currently, where have Bosnian Muslims been buried in Waterloo? Have they been buried in our, in our current cemeteries? Or has there not been a burial?
They've been buried in the multi-religious, the one off of Highway 63. I can't remember the name of the, yeah, Garden of Memories. There's a section there that was bought by the Muslim people where they have been married, buried. And they are reaching capacity there. They're very close, so they're looking for another cemetery.
Right now, we have 95 places bought up there, and pretty much we have 48, or 50, close to 50, buried already in these 16 years, how long we are here.
And this is in 16 years that only 48 spots have been occupied.
And then also, in part of your presentation, you mentioned that they were ready to put up privacy fences. So is that part of the agreement?
This was brought up before. Should the neighbors have any issues or complaints about the cemetery, the association has agreed that they would put up a privacy fence around the cemetery.
Yeah, we have neighborhood that they are concerned about that. So we promised actually to put fence between six or eight foot high. Let's say that you got your backyard, you don't see that behind. So you won't even know that it's there. So that's, that's how we try to keep away from, like, privacy. Put privacy fence there so that people be okay with.
Okay, and so that is part of the agreement, correct?
Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, in a cemetery based on this site, and there's a newer site plan that they had submitted for you as well. This, this property is owned R4RP, which is a planned residence district, which is why it's becoming, coming before the council. So the council has to approve site plan changes to a planned residence district, which is the action that you're asked to approve tonight by them. The other thing, for any cemetery location, whether it's in a planned district or not, it has to have a special permit process. That was approved by the Board of Adjustment, subject to it being completely screened. So the fencing that you're talking about has already been placed as a condition by the Board of Adjustment. So if the council approves the site plan amendment tonight, they would also be subject to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Further? Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments along with the recommendation of approval for the Programming, Planning, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property.
Second.
Very good, and that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to consider and pass for the second and third time an adopt ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you very much, counsel. And gentlemen, thank you, and good luck with your project. It's going to be a great project out there. Thank you. Very good. Resolutions, please. Let's do the first three. Mr. Hart?
Move to adopt a resolution approving recommendation of award of bid to Brownwood Sales of Columbus, Ohio on the amount of $51,990 for the purchase of one 2014 Timber Wolf TW10 log splitter. In five, I move to adopt a resolution approving a farm lease agreement with Bear Lee Farms LTD to farm approximately 3.35 acres of land generally located at the northwest corner of Amesboro Avenue and West Shawless Road at $200 per acre for a total yearly payment of $670. An authorized mayor and city clerk to execute said document. In six, I move to adopt a resolution approving a farm lease agreement with Russellou Brothers Farms, Inc. to farm approximately 31 acres of land generally located at the northwest corner of Martin Road and West Ridgeway Avenue at $161.29 per acre for a total yearly amount of $5,000. An authorized mayor and clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you. It's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Welker?
All these properties that we have here this evening, I'm assuming we're, we're hoping that someday we can put something on them. What would happen if General Motors called tomorrow and said, "We'd like to build something on one of these"? Do we have a clause to get out of it?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Actually, I've always wanted to be a farmer. We do, generally, we'll work with the property owners. There's some wording in there that basically would say that if, if we had a project that would go on them while their crops were out there, we'd pay crop damages. So there is some escape clause in there.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just note for the overall farm lease agreements for the year, we'll be making a little more than $12,000 more than we did last year on the farm leases. So it was very productive to go back out for bid for them.
So Noel, you said we pay crop damages?
We pay crop damages, so. As an example, on, on number five, if someone was going to build on that entire 3.35 acres, we'd go and work with the, with the farmer to figure out what crop damages were based on some information. Usually, we go with Iowa State University Extension for what crop damages would be for that, based on their previous yield and all that, and pay them those, those damages in exchange for the project going on there in the middle of the season. A lot of times, too, if we can wait for them to take the crops out and then go ahead with the construction season, we can do that as well.
Okay?
Deal.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Very good, motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, there's four left. If somebody could take seven, eight, nine, and 10, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt, please.
Item number seven is adopting a resolution approving a farm lease agreement with Lee Rottinghouse to farm approximately 65.17 acres of land generally located along the east side of Northeast Drive and north of Independence Avenue for a total yearly payment of $21,610. An authorized mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Eight is adopting a resolution approving a farm lease agreement with Wendell Loop Keys to farm approximately 19 acres of land generally located near the northwest corner of West Fourth Street and West Shawless Road for a total yearly payment of $250. An authorized mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item number nine is adopting a resolution approving a farm lease agreement with Michael S. Cook to farm approximately 19 acres of land generally located to the east of WCFN Drive, south of Aralina Highway at $90 per acre for a total yearly payment of $1,800. An authorized mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And finally, number 10 is adopting a resolution authorizing city clerk to certify approximately $26,485.60 against certain parcels for weed mowing, property junk cleanups, and sidewalk snow removals for the period of March through June of 2013.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding seven, eight, nine, or 10? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. 11, 12 have been deleted, so let's do item number 13, please. Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, I move to instruct city engineer to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera for the FY 2014 asphalt overlay program, contract number 857.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the overlay program? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contracts.
Second.
And that is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening as February 10, 2014, instruct city clerk to publish notices of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.